Good evening. Thank you all for joining us. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD is being held November 17th, 2020. The time is 6 o'clock. This meeting will be held by teleconference. The teleconference audio can be accessed at the following toll-free number, using the access code 283922941, and through an audio feed located at our YouTube channel. Any member of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item can send the comments to the following email address, On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number one, although members of the Board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum and attendance at this meeting by telephone call and internet access. Number two, we are meeting by use of both telephone conference call, online access, and through use of an email link for questions. Number three, if a member of the public submitted written comments in advance, the Board President or a member of the Administration will read the comments into record before or during the Board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. Number four, all other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. And number five, an audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Number six, we apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. And number seven, if you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787. And with that, I will call this meeting to order and do a roll call to ensure that we have a quorum. Mr. Morales?
Present.
Mr. Gueda?
Present.
Mr. Gondeta?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Mena?
Present.
And Ms. Rodriguez will be joining us. She had to work late, so she'll be joining us in just a little bit. But we do have a quorum, so we will move to item number two, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will please stand and join us tonight. Our pledge is being read by Miguel Moreno.
Good evening, esteemed Socorro ISD School Board, Staff, and Community. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. And item number three, Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board. The Texas Education Agency, TEA, will be awarding Purple Star Campus Designations for the first time ever to schools that show their support, their commitment to meet the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. And here in SISD, as you know, we take great pride in supporting all our families, but in this case, our military families. And now, we get to receive special recognition via this amazing, amazing honor that was created by the '86 Texas legislator through SB 1557, effective April 9th of 2020. So I'm extremely proud to report that our school district dominated this award category with a whopping 39 out of 106 campuses in Texas, earning this prestigious Texas Purple Star Campus Designation for going above and beyond to support our students with military ties. And our schools, they have campus transition programs, as well as campus-based military liaisons, webpages at the school and district level to provide resources and info for military-connected student families and much, much, much more. So there's just so many ways that our schools are available to assist our military-connected students and their families. So a huge congratulations to SISD Texas Purple Star Campuses. Thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your great work in supporting our heroes. Next, I'd like to mention our Board Honors and Special Presentations. They normally, at our Board meetings, we would honor our outstanding team of SISD students and staff who've earned local, regional, statewide, or national accolades and recognition. But due to the pandemic, we have not been able to bring in those exceptional individuals and teams. However, they're still deserving of that bright spotlight. So to honor our students and staff who've earned recent honors, we have posted an article on our website along with an animated presentation. So we're going to be also sharing it on our district's social media accounts, Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. So please share the story and post with your family and friends so that they can applaud our high-performing students and staff. Now, this month, we're honoring our Herschel Antoine Middle School students for winning top honors in the Nuclear Power Institute Student Competition. First place individual video went to Carson Dunlop. First place team video was earned by Sofiya Siniceros, Jasmine Chacon, and Leah Arambula. And also, second place team video was awarded to Eliza Hinton and also Daniela Mendez. Congratulations to our Herschel Antoine students for their amazing performance in this NPI competition. Also, want to highlight three SISD teachers for earning UTEP College of Education Annual Awards, which is the John and Gloria Lavis Excellence Award, which went to Brenda Aguirre from Myrtle Cooper. Evelyn Schwartz Endowed Award was earned by Cynthia Ranhead from John Druigan. And Evelyn Schwartz Endowed Award went to Miguel Saldana from Enzer Middle School. So amazing achievements by these three SISD teachers. A huge, huge congratulations. Also, in the spotlight, we have our SISD amazing counseling teams for winning the 2020-2021 Lone Star State School Counsel Association's Award. Our Bronze Award recipients are Susan, these are our counselors, Susan Campos, Beatriz Isa, Patricia Carillo, Jennifer Madrid, Angelica Lopez, Diana Romo, Yvette Harper, Erica Gonzalez, and Jessica Perez. Now, our Silver Award recipients are Carmen Bevan, Guadalupe Contreras, Salvador Chavez, Monica Dominguez, Melissa Galvez, and also Evelyn Garcia. Lastly, our Gold Award recipients went to Clarissa Cortez, Enrique Miramontes, Ivan Padearviles, and also Paola Figaro. So I'm extremely proud of our counselors. Congratulations to all. Also, this evening, we're also highlighting our SISD Purchasing Department for earning the TASBO 2020 Award of Merit of Purchasing and Operations. In our purchasing department, we have the following outstanding superstars: Grace Wallace, Ira Escobedo, Maria Morales, Debbie Mora, Estella Aguirre, Julie Rosales, Mabel Lozano, Judith Gonzalez, Lydia Aguirre, Patty Delgado. And of course, last but definitely not the least is Mr. Sam Garcia from our purchase, it was our purchasing director. So huge congratulations to our amazing purchasing department. I'm also extremely proud to recognize SISD Assistant Superintendent Ms. Carmen Crossay for winning the Texas Association of Student Council District Nine Administrators of the Year Award. So congratulations to Ms. Crossay. Way to go. And lastly, I want to honor our SISD employees for their 25, their 30, 35, and 40 years of service awards. These awards, and all these names will be listed. There's too many to call out right now. They just show how much our employees love our district. And tonight, you know, we'll honor them again. It'll be up on our website, all the different individuals who've worked 25 years, 30 years, 35 years, and again, 40 years. So congratulations to all these outstanding employees for their valuable contributions to our school district for so, so many years. These honors, again, they demonstrate that we have the best students, the best employees on the planet. So enjoy the spotlight on our webpage and social media because you have earned it. That concludes my comments, President Nahara.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. I know I speak for the rest of the Board whenever I say that we certainly miss being able to congratulate everyone in person. It's one of the highlights of being a Board Member. But I would like to say that this is just such a fantastic job by the entire team SISD. Those are longtime employees, our counselors, our students, our teachers. Just everyone doing an amazing job. But we sure do miss getting to congratulate everyone in person. We'll move on to item number four, the Public Hearing, Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Mr. Ressa?
Yes, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. I am Tony Dessa, the Chief Financial Officer for Socorro ISD. And tonight, we are holding a public hearing to discuss the district's financial rating for the 2019-2020 school year based on data from the 2019 school year. The date of this hearing was published in the West Texas Courier as required by statute. And if you now turn to page nine of your budget booklet, the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or FIRST as it is known, was instituted by the '76 Texas Legislature to achieve quality performance in the management of school districts' financial resources. The scoring criteria for FIRST consists of 15 indicators. A school district can earn a maximum of 100 points and must meet the first five critical indicators. And the other indicators are measured on a 10-point scale. So if you turn to page 10, the school district can earn one of four possible letter rate, great ratings. They are A Superior with a mathematical score of 90 to 100, B Above Standard, which is a score of 89 points, C Meet Standards with a score of 60 to 79 points, and F Substantial Achievement with less than 60 points or not meeting one of the several critical indicators listed. So I will go over the indicators. I will not necessarily go into detail on each one of them unless there's a question. But note that I will go over those indicators where we didn't get the maximum number of points and discuss the achieved ratings. So if you turn the page, please, looking at page 11. So the indicators are grouped into three separate categories. As mentioned before, they are the critical indicators. And here's a listing of the first three indicators having to do with the following. That's the timely submission of the audit report, whether, the second one being whether we have a clean opinion, and if it's free of any material weaknesses in the internal controls, and if we've met all our debt payments. And as you can see, we passed all of those indicators that are listed on this particular page. So if you go to page 12, the remaining critical indicator pertains to the district making timely payments to the IRS, Teacher Retirement System of Texas, Texas Workforce Commission, and other governmental entities. And Socorro ISD did make timely payments to all these entities. The fifth indicator was not scored because of the implementation of GASP-75, which charged the district's proportional share of its post-employment benefit liability to the Teacher Retirement System of Texas. Doing so would result in a negative balance in our net assets, and all districts really received that. So the TA is not scoring this particular indicator. If we go to page 13 of your budget booklet, here are indicators eight and nine, I'm sorry, six and seven. And what you have there is the number of days in cash. So what we have here is, we have 82, almost 83 days in cash. So that's to cover operating expenditures. So this resulted in points. For us to generate 10 points, we would have needed at least 90 days of expenditures, I'm sorry, of cash in days of expenditures or more. With respect to item number seven, it's inquire, this measures the current assets, current liabilities ratio for the school district and is sufficient to cover, and is it sufficient to cover short-term debt? And as you can see, it was 7.3. Anything above three gets 10 points, and that's what we received. So we go to page 14. Here are indicators eight and nine. With respect to the eighth indicator, our ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets was almost 68%, and therefore, we generated eight points on this indicator. We need to have a ratio of 60% or less to get 10 points. For indicator number nine, well, we did have a small deficit in our general fund balance. We did have over 60 days of cash in our operating fund, and therefore, we generated the 10 points. If we turn to page 14, here are indicators eight and nine. So what you have there is a ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets. And was it sufficient to meet the long-term solvency? Ours was .6784, which was higher than the .60, and therefore, we got eight points. So I think I might have skipped a couple of points, a couple of indicators. I'll go ahead and go to indicator number eight. Is it school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? As I mentioned before, we did have a small deficit, but we had 83 days of cash, and therefore, we generated 10 points. So if we go to page 15, indicators 10 and 11. Was the debt service coverage sufficient to meet the required debt service? We had more than two times what was needed, and therefore, we earned 10 points. And number 11, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? Our required benchmark is 8.55%. We had 8.59%, so it was lower, and therefore, we generated the 10 points. Now, we go to page 16, which you have is certainly the solvency ratios. First one is, did the school district not have 15% decline in the student-to-staff ratio over three years? We had a .38% decrease. We did have an increase in enrollment. So we had a, over the three-year period, we had a small decrease, but because we had an increase in enrollment of that particular school year, we had a maximum of 10 points. Going to page 17, to final, for indicators 13 and 14. Did the comparison of team's data to like information in the district's annual report result in a total variance of less than 3%? It was, and therefore, we got 10 points. And 14 was the external audit report free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and loss. And it was, and therefore, we got the 10 points there. And going to page 18, we have indicator number 15. This addresses the question of whether the school district received an adjusted repayment schedule for more than one fiscal year for over an allocation of the foundation school program. As a result of a financial hardship, the district did not receive it and therefore, received 10 points. So going to page number 19, in summary, the district's first score was 96 points, and the district received an A Superior rating. So this is the exact same rating that we received the prior year. And note that we've received our Superior rating for the last 11 years in a row, and that I think is something to be applauded by everyone. So with respect to page 20, first requires school districts to provide certain disclosures with respect to the superintendent's current contract, as well as Board members' travel reimbursements and other information for the 2019 fiscal year. Dr. Espinoza's current contract, as well as the Board's information, is available on the district's website, in the District's Accountability tab, in the Financial Transparency section under First Annual Management Report. The public is encouraged to visit the website and to review this information. And as you can see, several required disclosures were not applicable to SISD for the 2019 fiscal year as they did not occur. So that is the presentation, Mr. Nahara. Are there any questions from the Governing Board?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ressa? No, sir, Mr. Ressa, I would like to congratulate everyone within the district for receiving this A Superior rating for 11 years, counting now. This is an amazing accomplishment for our district, and we thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nahara.
At this time, this is a public hearing. If there is anyone online who has any questions or comments about the Financial Integrity Rating System, you may do so at this time. Okay, and now it's cricket. So I guess we have no questions, Mr. Ressa. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will move on to item number five, Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Morales and a second by Mr. Mena. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, Mr. Morales.
Aye.
Mr. Gueda?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
And the motion carries. We will move to item six, New Business A. Consider approval of final contract sum for the Cactus Trails Elementary School in kitchen improvements at Myrtle Cooper and Robert R. Rojas Elementary Schools. Mr. Eington?
Yes, good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. I am proud to present this following agenda item. You can find it on page 106 in your book. It is the recommendation that the Board accepts the work at Cactus Trail Elementary School and Myrtle Cooper and Robert Rojas Kitchen Improvements and approve the final contract sum and payment as presented. For policy CD Local Facility Construction, the district shall not make final payment for construction or supervision of construction until the work has been completed and the Board has accepted the work. Facility implanted has completed our due diligence on Cactus Trail Elementary School and Myrtle Cooper and Robert Rojas Kitchen Improvement. And as presented, the following contract sums, Deductive Change Order, Final Contract Sum and Final Payments, the Board acceptus. Cactus Trail Elementary School Original Contract Sum was $28,65,300. A Deductive Change Order of $1,183,358.94 has been presented to bring the final contract sum and the final payment of $122,879.28. For Myrtle Cooper and Robert Rojas Kitchen Improvements, the original sum was $659,000. A Deductive Change Order has been presented in the amount of $16,629.64, bringing the final contract sum to $642,370.36 and the final payment of $27,383.33. All the Deductive Change Orders have been presented to Dr. Espinoza and have been executed. Administration recommends approval of the following project closeout as presented.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gueda.
I just want to thank Mr. Eington for going back and allowing us, the district, for coming back for the savings for the Deductive Change over of over $1 million, actually, for one point. Was it $1.4 million, Mr. Eington?
It was, yeah. The total, one was 1.1 and the other was 16,000. So it's right at about 1.2 million.
So thank you, Mr. Eington, for you and your team for going back and saving us that money for Deductive Change. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'll let my team know. Thank you.
Any other comments? Now, I'll call for a vote, Mr. Morales.
Aye.
Mr. Gueda?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And item six B, consider approval of Package Three of the Auxiliary Jams for Campestria, Escondrias, Waco, HD Healy, and Robert R. Rojas Elementary Schools. And this is a rebid, Mr. Eington?
Yes, if you recall, about a month or so ago, we had the original package bid. We received four proposals on that. And Administration felt like that we didn't get the coverage that we wanted. And we requested the Board to go out for a rebid on this. And in your Friday package, I sent a board communiqué basically explaining that we did go out for proposals for the Package Three rebid for Campestria, Escondrias, Waco, Healy, and Rojas. And we would look at those evaluation. We received seven proposals. So we got a little bit more competition, and we've listed those in alphabetical order. And then the committee, based on the professional services procedures and for ranking, not only architects but construction manager, contractor, that was adopted by the Board back in March of 2004, along with the local policy CBA. Administration went back and ranked the seven proposals. And I provided that ranking to you. And based on the bids that came in, the seven bids, the lowest proposal was Aztec Construction at $6,610,000. And then Spartan was number two at $6,716,000. And they go down, all the way down to the number seven, which was $7,500,000. The architect did his scope of the project and contacted all of the proposals and basically stated that any of the seven proposals bids would be, they could do the job. So after that, Administration ranked the proposals, and I provided you with the evaluation score and total sheets and the following ranking. Medlock Commercial Construction received the highest score. Baines and Noble came in second with the second highest score. And then Pride General Contractor was the fourth proposer. Based on CBA Local and the procedures that we've been following since March of 2004, there's an item in there that basically says that Administration is, it will follow the procedures and that the goal is that the school district will try to spread the work to as many vendors as possible if the project is over a thousand, over a million dollars, excuse me. So upon reviewing that, I went back and looked at it. And the top four, or the top four people, Medlock, Baines, and Noble and Pride, are all under contract under the 2017 bond program. They're all working on projects. So Aztec Construction, which is the low bidder on this project, would be number five. Based on that, and based on looking at the procedures that we've been following, like I stated, since 2004, and CBA Local, Administration recommends that we award the contract to Aztec Construction for the auxiliary Package Three Rebid of $6,610,000.
I have a second. Go ahead, a second.
Second.
On mic.
I have a motion by Mr. Morales and a second by Mr. Gandetta. Is there any further discussion?
Eington?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and actually, and Aztec Construction was actually the lowest bidder, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, it was.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? And I will call for a vote. Mr. Morales?
Hi.
Mr. Getta?
Hi.
Mr. Gandetta?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia? Garcia?
Hi.
Mr. Minna?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eington.
Bye.
Item six C, consider approval to add Texas Fixed Income Trust Investment Pool. Mr. Ressa?
Yes, President Nahara, Dr. Espinosa, members of the board. The administration is requesting approval to add Texas Fixed Income Trust Investment Pool to our current investment portfolio. Texas Fix, Texas Fixed Income Trust also knows it as Texas Fit, features two distinctive and diversified investment pools that are designed specifically to fit the needs of Texas local governments. Texas Fit is managed by Water Walker Investments, a firm that has managed public funds to 2000. And is an S E C Registered Investment Advisor. The addition, the addition of Texas Fit will assist the district to further diversify our investment risk while providing another option to the district to increase investment yields, especially during this period of low investment rates. We have with us tonight, uh, Mr. Ken Couch from Water Walker Investments to answer any specific questions you have about the pool. We have provided you some information about this pool. Uh, we're asking approval to help us just have another option to hopefully generate additional yields in our investments. Uh, any questions, ma'am?
Are there any questions for Mr. Ressa or Mr. Couch?
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion? And I will call for a vote. Mr. Morales?
Hi.
Mr. Getta?
Hi.
Mr. Gandetta?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
Mr. Minna?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ressa.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item six D, consider approval of TASB Update 115. Ms. Macias?
Yes, President Nahara, Dr. Espinosa, members of the board. Administration recommends consideration and approval of the revisions to the following policies under TASB Update 115. Policy D E D, D I A, E I, F B, F E B, and F F G as presented. Any questions?
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandetta and a second by Mr. Minna. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Hi.
Mr. Getta?
Hi.
Mr. Gandetta?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
Mr. Minna?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Item number seven, Executive Session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss pending and potential acquisition or real property for school needs and to discuss personnel matters under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. At this time, board members, if you will leave this meeting and go to Executive Session, and the time is 6:35. We are back in session. The time is 6:54. And since there's nothing to vote on from executive, if there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 6:55.